We remind ourselves that your word tells us that the government rests on the shoulders of Jesus. So, Jesus, we look to you to lead this mayor and this council to do the goodwill that you desire for the citizens of Montgomery. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the committee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion for approval to August 19, 2025 work session minutes? Need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight with District Eight abstaining.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the August 19, 2025 regular council meeting minutes?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Right. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good evening. Good evening.
Um, just want to jump right in and just thank all the- Organization, uh, organization, excuse me. So, this program reflects our commitment to creating these opportunities to help our community grow. And applications will open on September the 12th. So, stay tuned for more information. Now, this Friday, Montgomery will host one of our favorite spring traditions, the River Bean Brew Fest and Country Jamboree. We're looking forward to welcoming the Brandon Jordan Band, featuring Montgomery's own Brandon Jordan, an Alabama Army National Guard veteran, along with Scott Bartlett of the national known band Saving Abel. Military members will receive discounted tickets as well as the opportunity for an exclusive meet and greet with the band. In addition to great live music, this event will feature more than 40 brews to sample, food trucks, local vendors, and activities like line dancing, Smash It. I didn't know about that line dance, but okay. Um, oh, the Smash It Room, excuse me. Long Games and the Mechanical Bull, I was about to say, I thought I was keeping up pretty good. Um, but that was one I hadn't heard about. So, anyway, um, this is also a chance for our community to come together and enjoy good food, good music, and good company, and we encourage all of you, both those that are here personally and those that are watching virtually, to come out and put on your cowboy boots and your best western wear. Now, looking ahead, Montgomery will host, uh, HBCU Classic Weekend, October the 3rd and 14th. We're really excited about it, and if Sunday night was any indication, uh, we're in for a great crowd, a great atmosphere, and a great game. We're proud of the event. We had the Crampton Bowl with the Red Tails Classic, uh, where over 15,000 people came out, uh, to support this event. And we're just really grateful to everyone from Tuskegee University, uh, as well as Winston-Salem State University for coming out. But most importantly, our community right here in Montgomery and everyone who played a role in helping us spread the word and who played a role in helping us, uh, put some cheeks in seats. We did a pretty good job with that. So, coming up next month, we'll have even more with, um, Morehouse Tuskegee Classic on Saturday, October the 4th at 6:00 PM. Uh, this is a rivalry that draws alumni and students and fans from across the country to honor the legacy and excellence, uh, of our HBCUs. That will also be on the same date as the homecoming game for Alabama State University. So, we're expecting a great time, uh, in Montgomery, a lot of dollars to be spent downtown, uh, and to be spent in other parts of the city. And we're going to try to encourage, uh, all the people who are coming, whether it's for homecoming or for, uh, this historic classic, to truly come out, uh, and take advantage of what Montgomery has to offer. So, as we welcome guests, uh, let's show the pride and hospitality and energy that define our community as we do for each and every event that we have in the city. And we want to support our small businesses and promote them as well, uh, and guide a lot of the visitors to some of our local entrepreneurs, uh, and what they do and where, uh, they have their businesses, just to show a little bit of the taste of Montgomery that we have and a little bit of the swag that we have in this city. So, with that, Mr. President, that would conclude my message, and I'll turn it back over to you this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions on the mayor? Thank you. First item? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Ms. Beard?
Um, yes, at this time, we'd like to recognize the Dalreta PTA, Miss, um, with, as winners of the National PTA School of Excellence Award. Miss, um, Brenda, will you please write, read the proclamation?
Whereas parent teachers associations play a vital role in strengthening the connection between families, schools, and communities to ensure every child's success. And whereas in recognition of their exemplary work and impact, the Dalreta Elementary School PTA has been awarded the prestigious National PTA School of Excellence designation for 2024 through 2025, a distinction that honors PTAs that make a substantial position, this is positive difference in the school and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen L. Reed, Mayor of the City of Montgomery, together with Montgomery City Council, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Dalreta Elementary School PTA for their extraordinary service, leadership, and national recognition as a PTA School of Excellence for 2024, 2025.
So, on behalf of our City Council, District 2, and our city, I extend heartfelt congratulations and gratitude to your PTA. Your leadership and commitment are an exonerating example of what it means to invest in both community and education. If you'll come up and get your proclamation at this time. I'm going to introduce everyone once we get up here, okay? I'm taking three. All right, we have, um, Dr. Cutter, who's our principal, Jennifer Noah, Vice Principal, Marquetta Johnson, President, Jazzy Young, Vice President, Chair Walker, Treasurer and Community Chair, Chardelle Goins is your Room Parent Coordinator, and Carlin Johnson, Volunteer Coach. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Be- Ms. Beard. Uh, any special committee report? Mr. Mitch?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
I might have a video, um, due to the fact that it is Attendance Awareness Month for Montgomery Public School System. They have put out a PSA that I would like to share with the council at this, this time. Josh, if you can?
Hello, MPS family. I'm Jacqueline Jackson, one of your district resource officers from the Office of Student Support Services. September is Attendance Awareness Month, a time to highlight just how important it is to be present, be prepared, and be productive. In Alabama, school attendance isn't just encouraged, it's required for all children ages six through 17. So, let's start this school year strong by making attendance a top priority.
Dares, we need your partnership to keep students on track. Every time your child is absent, an excuse must be submitted. Please remember, MPS does not accept excuses via fax or email. And parental notes are limited to eight days per school year. All excuses, whether from a parent or doctor, must be turned in within three school days of your child returning to class. If your child has a chronic illness, be sure to submit a physician's letter so we can properly support their attendance plan.
Staying informed is key. Log into Power School to monitor your child's attendance, grades, and class schedule. Also, please ensure your contact information is up to date. If changes are needed, visit your child's school with the proper documentation. Let's work together to stay connected and engaged in your child's success.
For any questions or concerns, check your 2025-2026 School Handbook, or feel free to contact our office directly at 334-851-4827. We're here to help, and we're committed to supporting every student and every family.
Be present, be prepared, be productive. Every day counts.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
I would share with the council, if you have, I don't, I know Charlie might not have social media, but if you have social media, I would like for you guys to, you know, share it on your social media sites. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pres- Mr. President?
Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to set the Commerce and Industry Committee meeting. Uh, it'll be for short-term rentals, Brenda, and we're adding, uh, pad splits to the conversation, uh, on ordinances, and that'll be set for September 15th at 11:00 AM.
Okay, that's got to be introduced. I said that's got to be introduced and then put into committee.
Introduce the ordinance?
Introduce it.
You want to introduce it now?
Yeah, let's go ahead and-
Yeah, we'll go ahead and introduce the ordinance. I'm passing it out.
It's proposed ordinance on- Spit plate, short.
So, it's the short-term rentals, which we've already done that one. So, the, uh, the add-on is the pad splits, and he's passing it down now.
Yeah, there's two separate issues that we're trying to handle. It's a similar topic, but we are-
At this very same meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Or do we have two separate meetings?
We'll do it at the same.
Okay.
All right, so we'll place this ordinance, uh, into the Commerce Committee meeting, and the date is set for September the 15th at 11 o'clock.
Thank you.
September the 15th at-
11:00 AM.
All right, thank you to Johnson.
Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Pruitt?
Ms. Johnson, can you give us just like a reader digest version of what this is?
Uh, the pad splits. I'll let Andrew give you the re- uh, the summary of that.
Sure. So, one of the issues that we have right now, and it came up, uh, from one of my neighborhoods over the past weekend, is this issue of pad splits, where essentially we're taking single-family homes and giving them multi-family build-outs, where people use common space together, like kitchens and bathrooms, but they individually rent rooms in a house for different periods of time, so they're not known to each other. Um, pad split, similar to Airbnb, is another tech company that's trying to do some, um, you know, they say that they're for traveling nurses or people on contracts, but the main issue that I've been noticing with these is that they're coming into places that are zoned, single-family. Rather than coming to us to be zoned as a multi-family, you do this pad split thing, which kind of skirts around. And now you've got cars going in and out of the neighborhood, you've got, uh, unknown people being put into houses with each other. And for neighborhoods that have expectations about what type of zoning they were, you know, buying into, this is just another thing that I think we have to be proactive and get ahead of, rather than wait for something to happen and then kind of be more reactive. And since we already have Airbnb, um, an ordinance on short-term rentals that we're examining in the Commerce Committee, uh, conferred with, uh, Councilor Johnson, and want to include this as a separate, and I talked to Stacy as well, um, that, that we do this as two separate ordinances, but consider them both at the same meeting.
And I'd like to add, uh, just for those that are listening and in the audience here, for the university presidents that may tune in or get some information, it's not for dormitories, not student housing. We're not going back and saying anything about that. It's literally about in residential areas and the city limits.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Mr. Grimes?
I'd like to bring up an ordinance we had probably a week ago, a lot, two weeks ago, sorry. And we just got to tell you, we, I asked for a Q and it didn't need to have a Q on it. Ms. Blaylock, how do I handle this?
We need to do it at the beginning of all business. We need to get the consent agenda out of the way, and then we'll do it.
All right.
Mr. President, you ready for the consent?
I'm ready.
Item one is your consent agenda that's before the council for your approval.
All right, need a motion to suspend rules?
Move, uh, move to rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
You just adopt?
Just adopt.
Unanimous?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous?
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock.
Okay, now, Mr. Grimes, make a motion to reconsider ordinance 40-2025.
I want to make a motion to reconsider ordinance number 40-2025.
Okay, we need the, we need the vote on that first.
All right, I have a motion to reconsider, um, ordinance 40-2025. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous?
Mr. Grant?
Motion to amend to take the Q out of the ordinance and leave the rest of it, that they're going to put a cul-de-sac and no connectivity in there?
Okay, we will remove the Q, the qualify, but also we'll amend to section two to change restricted to subject to rather than restricted to.
Okay.
All right, so voting on the main motion?
The motion to amend.
Okay, motion to amend. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous?
Now, voting on the main motion?
Yeah, to adopt as-
Mr. Grant?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. The ordinance is re-adopted as amended.
Thank you.
Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning 3221 Dove Street from an R-60D district to an R-99S district.
All right, do we have a representative for Dove Street? Dove Street?
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Your name for the record, sir?
Uh, Harris Harris, uh, 3221 Dove Street.
All right, talk to us about what you plan on doing.
Um, well, actually, uh, I came in to request the rezoning of, uh, property that I own, um, at 3221 Dove Street. Um, it's consistent with currently out there. I got colored images that I brought, about five of, five or six images that has probably out of tentative possible, uh, properties that's out there. Eight of them are mobile homes. Um, I also got a printout from the city's portal that shows manufactured home for the ones that's directly next to me as well as across the street. So, out of a possible ten properties, eight of them are currently mobile homes.
Okay, so you're asking that this be rezoned to allow you to place a mobile home?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rob?
I have a question. You have down here, you have mobile home subdivision. You don't have one mobile home. You're asking for a mobile home subdivision. Subdivision meaning it can be multiple, uh, mobile homes. Um, I've been out there and I've talked to the resident. Those mobile homes that you have pictures of, people are not living in them. Some of them are abandoned.
You shared the pictures?
Mm-hmm.
Shared the pictures?
Yes, sir.
Um, so I've talked to several residents in the neighborhood, and they have, uh, they have concerns about the mobile home subdivision, which I have concerns about a mobile home subdivision. On this paper, it says, "R-99 to rezonate to a mobile home subdivision." That's what it says.
Oh, that's incorrect.
So, that's the reason why?
This is my mobile home. That's incorrect. I'm sorry. It's mo- it's one mobile home.
Okay, whose mobile home? Is it your mobile home you're putting out there? One?
Yes, ma'am. So, not only do I own the property of 3221, I own the acre that's directly behind it. So, both of those are mine, and it's in a dead end street. So, it's not a subdivision. It won't be like multiple, multiple mobile homes. No, it wouldn't be that.
Okay, well, I would, Mr. President, I'd like to carry this over so me and him can talk, because I would like to get back with the residents, because it's labor as a mobile home subdivision. It's not labor, labor as him having one mobile home, and that's the understanding that they have that you're going to turn into a subdivision.
Oh, no, 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 I couldn't, I couldn't possibly say that.
No, I want to meet with the community and him. Do you have a problem with us getting together and going?
Not at all.
Okay, I'm gonna give you my information. We'll carry this over, and then you and I can get together and go back out there with the community.
Okay.
Yes, hold on for a second. Ma'am, something was brought to my attention, uh, after the work session, and I'm trying to get clarification from legal, that the planning commission, if you look at item two and three, they took no action. So, you know, I, I got some issues with the planning commission not taking any action on that. That's what they're, they're there for, to vet these type of problems before we get to the city council now. Over the last couple of months, we've been receiving a lot of things from the planning commission with no action, especially on controversial things, that they don't take action about. So, they was telling me that they couldn't do anything, that they were legally advised that it was spot zoning, and they couldn't act on it.
I would have to defer that to Carol, um, I mean, Carol Ann Pinkson, who represents us at the planning commission. I don't know enough of the facts to, to really comment intelligently at this moment.
Okay, could, we have that information by our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, Mr. Harris.
I'm, I'm gonna give, come out in a minute and give you my number.
Pleasure hearing, Mr. President.
Oh, a public hearing has been held. It's non-profit for the council. Ms. Rob?
I would like to carry this over, Ms. Blaylock, for, to the next, uh, council meeting if possible. Give us opportunity to meet with the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item three, hearing over proposed ordinance rezoning 3521 Hamble Road from an R-60D district to a B-2 district.
All right, need a representative for Hamble Road property? Item number three?
Yes, sir. How you all doing?
I'm good. What's your name for the rec?
My name is Curtis Vine Jr., resident of Montgomery all my life. Worked at Montgomery Public School for 40 years, and I'm trying to open up an outdoor fee market.
You say Curtis Vine?
Curtis, with an H, with an H.
Purdys. Purdys, you got them. All right, this is a public hearing. Ms. Rob?
Um, also, how you doing, Ms. Vine? Um, I've also went out there to the community, and I've talked to them. Um, I've also went out there to the community and I've talked to them. And it says commercial zoning. So by commercial zoning, that means you can take it into a flea market and turn it into something else later. So Mrs. Blaylock, at this time, um, I will get with the community again so we can talk and we can get with this community before we do this because one thing I'm gonna look at is what our community is involved in.
Right, I had, I had spoke to, uh, one of the preachers and some of the people out there and let them know what, because they came by and asked me what I was doing and they said they didn't have a problem.
That's why we're gonna get together because I spoke with them too and the neighborhood association has a problem with it. So we're gonna go back together. That's why I will carry it over for two weeks so that you and I can get together because they do have a neighborhood association meeting coming up next week and I would love for you to be there so we can talk about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Blaylock, I would like to carry this over for two weeks also.
Okay, we need to know if there's any opposition.
Okay. Okay, public hearing has been held. It's non-profit for the council. Ms. Rob.
Ms. Blaylock, I would like to carry this over for two weeks, uh, to the next meeting as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item four, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning the zoning ordinance sections one, two, three, four, five, six, and nine.
Alright, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to come speak before this item? Please come forward. Send, uh, declare it's non-profit for the council. Need a motion?
Motion to adopt. Motion to suspend rules.
Just adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Keep it.
Item five is the hearing on proposed ordinance amending fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and debt service budget and adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating and debt service budget.
Okay, this is a public hearing on the proposed operating budget. On the, uh, public communication roster, we have Mr. John Norris.
John what?
Norris.
Norris, okay.
Uh, Mr. Murphy Green and Miss Roberta Collins, if you guys are just coming.
Murphy Green and.
Roberta Collins. Yes, sir.
Uh, good afternoon. Sorry, I'm not a big public speaker, but, um, I just wanted to reiterate uh, the need for the fire department raise. And I believe that's the time to do it is right now. Um, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Right now, we are carrying around fifty vacancies. To cover those shifts, the city will spend around seven million dollars in overtime this year. Overtime may keep the trucks rolling, but it's expensive. It drains morale and it puts tired firefighters back on the street. Replacing a firefighter isn't cheap either. It costs around forty-two thousand dollars for recruits with their uniform, testing, academy pay and benefits and turnout here. That doesn't include the training division's expenses or the months it takes before that rookie is fully effective. Every departure costs the city tens of thousands of dollars on top of the overtime to cover the vacancy. The most cost-effective staffing plan is to keep the firefighters we already have. Only thirty-two percent of our personnel actually live in the city of Montgomery. Nearly seventy percent commute from outside the city. That shows cost of living is not what actually drives firefighters to come and work here. And when Birmingham pays around sixty thousand dollars, Huntsville around fifty-seven thousand dollars, and Mobile around fifty-five thousand dollars, we're having trouble competing. This is not about being the highest-paid department. It's about being competitive enough to retain the firefighters and paramedics who know our city and protect our residents. I respectfully ask for your support of a ten percent pay adjustment. It is the smartest way to reduce overtime, prevent turnover, and safeguard public safety. Thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Norris?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Alright, Minister Green, Murphy Green.
Good afternoon, uh, first, uh, your honor, praise to the most high God. My name is Minister Murphy Green, a local pastor in the community. And also I'm the treasurer of what's called the Montgomery Community Action Agency. As I travel around the city and I see the effect of the tariffs raising the cost of goods upon all people, there's going to be a great need for more assistance. But we're here this afternoon only to say thank you for again including the Montgomery Community Action Agency uh, in your budget this year. And that's all we're here to say.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Green. Any questions, Mr. Green? Alright, Ms. Collins.
One other thing I can say that this one helps us to be true to our mission statement. We combat poverty and advocate for self-sufficiency through program services which assist the low-income citizens in the River Region. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, item. Alright, okay, council. This is, anyone else like to speak on item five? Alright, we will have a council, uh, budget hearing, budget meeting on, I want to put it on the ninth. Ninth of September? Next Tuesday?
Okay.
Three thirty.
The old council chamber right here.
Old council.
Okay.
A little love in that one.
And six is carried over following them.
Yes.
Okay. Item seven, application for a conference center doing business is Hidden Gym, thirty-seven fifty-eight Norman Bridge Road.
Alright, representative for Hidden, Hidden Gym, please go forward. Hidden Gym, item seven. Alright, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Mr. President, the owner of the property and I have not connected over the past two weeks. My biggest concern about this location, obviously, not just a couple of months ago, we had an event center that had a shooting incident across the street from this location. So I'm very concerned about the activities that they say they're gonna have versus what is actually gonna be held there. Do they, do they have to be here for today's? They don't have to have cause of all business?
No, they don't have to be, but they should.
That's what I was gonna say. Well, I was gonna ask them that they, one, obviously that we reinforce the fact that we're not gonna be having any alcohol on the premises, period. They don't need to have a liquor license or anything like that. And also was gonna ask about their closing times because I don't think dance practice needs to go much later than nine o'clock at night, maybe ten o'clock at night. Uh, but they're not here this week and so I will, um, if we want to contact them one more time, we'll carry this over to the next meeting, but after that.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Item eight, application for a lounge retail liquor class two package license doing business is Payless Tobacco in Debris, seven twenty Eastern Boulevard.
Alright, need a representative from Payless?
Yes, Litforarama, Chris.
Your name for the record?
Litforarama.
Okay. Yes, sir, Bob. Your mic is gone.
Okay, he resolved the tax issue.
So, okay, you, okay, alright, Mr. Graham?
Ye- yes, sir. We didn't, the neighborhood, whole neighborhood didn't get to meet with him. They're meeting with him next Tuesday. So we'll carry this over two weeks.
Mr. Graham, I think, I, I got information that I think they met with the neighborhood association.
That group right there, the whole, I got a couple of emails and letters today that they didn't want it. So I want them to meet with the whole neighborhood.
So, who, who you have with you?
They're from the neighborhood.
We are, we are, we are members of the joint neighborhood.
Okay. Let me get your name for the record. Let me go ahead and get your name. Step to the microphone.
Um, we are board members of the, um, Territorial Civic Association.
And so what should we, so you, you for or against?
We're for it.
Okay.
The board is.
Okay.
But it has not gone before the general meeting yet, which is next Tuesday.
Okay, so you guys, say that again. You're meeting next Tuesday or you already met?
No, Tuesday, the ninth. We're meeting next Tuesday.
So that means we'll carry this over for two more weeks. But we carried it over last.
I know, they didn't meet.
So who, who, who supposed to coordinate the meeting?
Uh, the current, the, the president of the HO, their association moved and had a new one and just, I don't know.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Your name for the record?
Her and I are members of the Board of the Civic Association.
Okay.
We have met with the gentleman and seen his other business and we approve of the way he does things. However, the whole neighborhood will be at the meeting next week.
Okay. So the whole meet, the whole neighborhood, so what happens in two weeks if we come back and the neighborhood don't meet? I just, the gentleman has been here a couple of times.
We, we will make a decision in two weeks whether they meet or not.
Yeah, our neighborhood meeting is next Tuesday.
Okay.
Mr. President, you didn't get their names. Could you all state your names?
I am April Alexander.
Okay, and your ma'am?
Sheila Kaplan.
Thank you.
And your name, sir?
My name is Inio Santiago. I am the husband of Sheila Kaplan.
Okay, alright, so the council member for this, for this item wants to carry it over for two weeks. I just think, you know, just, this is Calhoun's opinion. We carried this over. We didn't have any opposition in it two weeks ago. No one came out. It was, it was properly posted on the building. There's a vacant building within the city of Montgomery at both locations. And so, you know, we're not drawing any tax dollars or tearing up anything from what we talked, me and Mr. Jenright talked with the, uh, gentleman. Yes, ma'am.
There's been a homeless problem, uh, and all of those buildings on the service road, uh, behind our neighborhood. And we are really happy to find somebody who's willing to come in, do something with the buildings, uh, promise to, uh, create lighting and have security. And we think that'll be a benefit to the neighborhood.
Okay.
That sounds great, Mr. Calhoun. The problem being across the street, we've turned the service station down twice for a liquor store right across the street. So that was brought up today to me, you know, so we need to talk through this.
Okay. You carried it over?
Thank you.
Sit. What was that, Mr. Jenright? Okay, next time. They're carrying it over for two weeks. They want to do their meeting in seven days, so they carried it over. Thank you.
Item nine, pursuant to ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-three, council approval of administrative fee of three thousand four hundred dollars for XS Ultra Lounge, thirty-four twenty Atlanta Highway for overcrowding.
Alright, you ready? Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, sir, uh, good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm District Fire Chief K.R. Peoples. Um, and you want me to go ahead and go into everything now or?
Yes, sir.
Alright, good deal. So on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, uh, the Bureau of Investigation, we conducted a nightclub inspection. I was out doing ru- routine nightclub inspections that night, um, which led over into the twenty-third. But, uh, we reported to thirty-four twenty Atlanta Highway, which is XS Ultra Lounge. And of course, the parking lot is, it was completely packed, but once we got in, just general observation of inside of the structure, it was evident that it was over. Uh, we did do an occupant count. Uh, the official occupant count was two hundred and twenty-eight people. Uh, he has a max occupancy allowed of a hundred and sixty. So that put him as actually sixty-eight people over. So therefore he had to be closed down for sixteen hours.
Okay. Your name for the record, sir?
Eduardo Brown.
Okay. You'd like to address what you're talking about?
Please. As I asked him that evening, the parking lot was packed. However, we don't allow loitering in the parking lot. There were cars out there. There was plenty of security. We didn't require MPD to clear the parking lot. Nobody was in the parking lot. They approached the front door and I even asked him that evening, there were two clickers that were involved with marshal, which marshals were clicking. There was a vast disparity in the number between the two clickers. There was. We, we opted and he explained to me, he said, mine's is probably more accurate. Okay. I don't understand why two clickers would be used if there's gonna be a huge disparity in the two. Why wouldn't it just be his clicker? Another thing, we have a smoking area in the rear of the building, which the customers do not have to come through the building to exit. They may exit and not return. When we hit capacity, nobody's allowed to come in. Our security have walkie-talkies from the parking lot to the person in the back. They understand if they go out and we're near capacity, they have to stay in the smoking area. They counted people that were outside of the building. So if we would have went with the lower clicker and we wouldn't have counted the people that were in the smoking area, we would have been right at capacity. I appreciate what they do. We had the same discussion that night. I appreciate what they do. I understand. It's a safety issue. In our, in our regards, we have the square footage. Our building wasn't that packed. We have the square footage. It's an accommodation issue with us for toilets. It's not because of square footage. The city inspections department is the one that set our capacity. It's because of toilets, not because of square footage or fire, um, extinguish, sprinklers. It's more of accommodation than a safety issue. But if we would have never counted those people that were behind our building and we would have went with the lower clicker, I'm a person that accepts accountability. Okay, we might have been over ten people, honestly. Like, okay, I accept that. However, it wasn't sixty-something people that we were over.
Alright, anybody have any questions, Mr. Brown?
I, I got a question. What is, Mr. Brown, I understand that what if, what if it starts pouring down raining? Are these, these people not standing in the rain, they're just coming in? So what are we gonna do with those people? Just let them stand in the rain?
We have a tent that we utilize.
Is tents up out there now?
Um, the tent is back there. Yeah, we have a guy, we have a gentleman that lives back there. Um, he was living down in the ditch in the water.
Lives in the tent?
No, he lives behind our building. We have different homeless people and we use them to clean the parking lot. We feed them. We let them clean up. He lives behind our building. We have a tent behind there. He li, he doesn't live under the tent. The tent is ours. But we have a tent that we place out there when we open. No, somebody will steal it if we leave it back there.
I got you.
Yes.
Um, tell me the official rule. Does it outside count?
So, uh, at, as that night, it's some of the things that he's saying is true, some of it is not. Um, yes, we did. It was actually three clickers. And the reason we do that is just to make sure we're not missing anyone. But like I explained to Mr. Brown that night, my clicker is the official clicker because I'm standing at the front door and I'm getting every individual that comes out. So I would like to address that first of all. There was not a huge disparity, as he said. Um, also, if you have people going out back to smoke, and this is his words, what he explained to me was they'll go out back and smoke. And he stated that they will go around the building to come back in. There is no way that you're keeping up with how many people are going around your building at twelve-thirty, one o'clock in the morning. And you're not finna tell me that those individuals gonna get right back in line to go back into a place that they already paid. Because he even, he even stated, when we was getting ready to initiate the count, he even stated that, uh, how am I gonna know who paid? So that lets me know right there you don't have a system set up to keep track of anybody coming in and out the door. And all this, this conversation, this entire thing is on by the cam.
Actually, I stated that we have a security guard behind our building and they communicate with the front door with walkie-talkies. All of our security guards have walkie-talkies. They don't walk back around to the front. No, no, I'm not disputing what you're saying. This is how we operate.
Talk to the camera, talk to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, when we, when we let them out to go and smoke, we operate a non-smoking establishment. When people are partaking in adult beverages, they're enjoying themselves, people are gonna have the one to smoke. We don't allow them to smoke. We let them out back. We have a security guard back there with a walkie-talkie. If we feel like when we're close to capacity, they sit out there. When people leave out, front door will radio to the back. When he'll let them back in through the back door. We don't let them go around the building. They do come in back through the same egress door that they use. And the disparity between the clickers was, I think it was almost thirty people. To me, if this is a monetary fine and it is based on the amount of people that were clicked, it should be exact. That evening, he also told me this is a, um, estimate. It's a monetary fine. Every person that's in there, we're getting charged for. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we weren't over loud, but it was not sixty-something people. It wasn't.
So I would like to address that as well. Uh, whether it was just to appease the discrepancies in the numbers, it does not matter whether it was twenty people or twenty-eight people over.
Correct.
The current ordinance falls twenty-six to fifty percent. He was forty-two percent over. So there is no, there's, like I explained to him that night, the fact of the matter is you're over, you're over capacity. And the fact of the matter that we're having this discussion is ridiculous because here's the thing. I'm pretty sure all those individuals that burnt up at the Rhode, uh, Rhode Island nightclub, I don't think they expected to die that night. You had people in there that were in wheelchairs. You had over the allowed oxygen by the fire marshal's office, which you're in violation.
Right.
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, okay, we heard your hand. Okay, now, before the council to uphold what the fire department is telling us, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
No, sir, you don't have to suspend the rules. You just uphold what they did. Yes, sir.
Motion to uphold.
Okay, have a motion to uphold. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Alright.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd also like to show, show calls. Mr. Brown, we've seen the other videos and other, in, in the, whenever we can do it, Ms. Blaylock, the next. Ms. Blaylock, the next, a month, thirty days, whenever it takes.
A show cause on this establishment?
On this one, because there's, there's videos of fights in this place, and the fact that we're over isn't, is not helping our cause.
Okay, I'll get the notification out there.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Now, ma'am, I ask a couple of questions, please.
Okay.
Okay. Um, one, I think is gonna be more of a legal question. Right now, Montgomery violence is kinda rampant, whether it's twelve o'clock during the day, on the Atlanta Highway, or on Zelda Road, or wherever these issues occur. It doesn't make it any better that we are operating ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock at night, we get it a lot worse. We had a sheriff from another county, I'm, I'm all the well-versed, I'm very well-versed in the fact that we're not, not allowed to have MPD, we're not allowed to have sheriffs because of the, the liability insurance. I'm well-versed in that. We reached out, we got a sheriff from another county, we reached out to the sheriff, he's okay with one of his deputies being out there. We're not trying to be sneaky, we're not trying to be underhanded, we're trying to protect our business and our customers. When you have carloads of guys that come up, and all of them have assault rifles, they'll pull it, they will. Blue lights help in the parking lot. One evening, an MPD officer pulled up, and he made contact with the sheriff deputy, and he, I guess he reported it, and they called the sheriff in the other county, and they said we're not allowed to use them. Can I have an understanding of that? We're just trying to protect our business, like, violence is rampant, it is, we need help. Can I get some understanding of that?
Mr. Brown, I mean, from, from my standpoint, we're here to talk about upholding that. Now, one, your off-duty officer where you got from another county, if they're off-duty, and they have their own private contract, or whatever, that's, that's between you and the business. You know, so if his sheriff, uh, department is telling him he can't work an off-duty job in Montgomery?
No, his, no, the sheriff from the other county said he could, MPD contacted them and told them that they didn't want them here.
Chief, you, you hear that? Our chief said he'd never come in on that.
Gotcha.
All right. All right, thank you.
Show cause hearing?
We'll get a letter out to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item ten, ordinance requiring council approval of contracts fifty thousand and above.
All right, Mr. Semens?
Uh, continuance of the ordinance that we had last year, so we make a motion to suspend the rules.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous?
No, no, I didn't.
One extension?
Yeah.
Which carries it over. Item eleven, application for lounge retail liquor class two package license doing business is Smoke Haven, thirty-seven fifty-nine Eastern Boulevard.
You need a representative for Smoke Haven?
Yes, I'm, I'm the owner of Smoke Haven.
Your name?
Khalil Alzakani.
Did you get that? Say that one more time.
Khalil Alzakani.
It's only application.
Okay, we got you. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward? Send down a cloud of public hearing that has a property for the council.
Mr. President, um, we're gonna have to hold this particular application up. Um, I think it's not within the two-hundred feet of a, of a church. Um, I think that he's, he, and I don't believe that he is within that two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Um, so, we will have to carry this over, Mr. Blay, Ms. Blaylock, until I get a definite-
Hey, do we have anyone from zoning, uh, cause I think zoning goes out on these items?
I'm Warren Adams, interim planning director. Um, we did check back at the office, and there seems to be some dispute as to whether it's in two-hundred-and-fifty feet or not. And the latest information I got was it is within two-hundred-and-fifty feet, so we would like to check this more, more thoroughly.
Okay, so you're saying it's within, so you wanna double-check before it comes back before the council?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, we'll be carrying this item over for two weeks, sir?
All right.
All right, thank you. Oh, we need to close the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing has been held, it's proper for the council.
Mr. President, I would like to carry this over for two weeks.
All right, thank you.
Item twelve, application for retail beer on off-premises doing business is Chipotle Mexican Grill, twenty-six eighty-two Eastern Boulevard.
You representative for Chipotle? Your name for the record?
Sonia Edson.
All right. This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward? All right, send down a cloud of public hearing that has a property for the council. Public hearing has been closed, property for the council, Mr. Semens, need a motion to suspend?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you, good luck with your bid. We welcome businesses in District Five.
Item thirteen, application for, application for retail beer and retail table wine off-premises only doing business is La Costa Market, twenty-six fifty-six Old Summer Road.
All right. The representative for La Costa Market, please come forward. All right, your name for the record, sir?
Derek Benson.
Say that again?
Derek Benson.
Derek Benson, speaking to your mic.
Derek Benson.
Okay, Derek Benson, okay.
Derek what?
Vincent.
Benson, thank you.
All right. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward? Send down a cloud of public hearing that has a property for the council, Ms. Riley?
What time your hours are again?
The stores are closed at ten.
Ten P.M., okay. I have no issue with your liquor license, make sure you have some good grocery in there, I done asked you.
All right, need a motion.
I, I, I'm talking at this moment, make sure you have some good grocery in there for me, please, and the community is excited to know that it's a grocery store coming, so thank you, let's, let's just do the-
Can we get a motion?
When I finish talking, we can. So, just let's, uh, make sure we do what we need to do to help the community out there. Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Give me a motion, Michelle.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Hey, hold on, I need to close the public hearing. I did already with that.
You did.
All right, thank you.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Have a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, make sure you close at ten.
He will. He will.
Item fourteen, resolution appointing Brook Ward to the Montgomery Queen City Commission. And council, I put before you a substitute on that one, too.
All right, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All right, and then I need, I gotta pass it out and stuff.
We need, we need to vote on the suspension of rules.
Okay, have a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous?
All right, now I need a motion to substitute.
We need a motion to adopt, and then a motion to a substitute.
Need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please. Now a motion to substitute.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Motion to substitute.
I can have a motion to, to substitute, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, and a motion to adopt a substitute.
All right, need a motion to adopt the substitute.
Motion to adopt the substitute.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted as substituted.
All right, item fifteen?